Welcome to the Livonia City Council. Sorry we had a little technical difficulty, but we're back in touch. The council member Kathy White, Councilwoman White will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman White, and thank you to the young man in the audience. We heard you up here, and you did a great job of the pledge. Thank you. We'd like to welcome you to the May 20th of the study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,874th regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, June the 3rd. We do have a couple of council absences tonight. Councilman Meakin will not be here, nor will Councilman Kritzman. Council, is there any announcements you may have or any guests you'd like to introduce? Alrighty, we send out our good wishes to our mayor as well, and also council, we have new data on item four. This is a study session, there will be no vote taken this evening. The council members will however offer either a resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolution offered may include an approving, a denying, or a referring resolution to a committee or a city department for their report and recommendation. Others will simply be received and filed for the information of the council. Please note that tonight's agenda will move on to our regular meeting, which will be held again on Monday, June the 3rd, where they will be officially voted on. If you'd like to participate tonight in any item on the yellow sheet, which is our agenda outside the door, please approach podium to my left or to my right and give us your name and address, and we'll be happy to hear your comments. Okay, council, we have new data as well on item four, and we will move into our audience communication. Anyone wishing to address the council on any item that's not on the yellow sheet, if you would approach the podium to the left or right. I see no one approaching. Okay, then we'll move into item one, which is a block party. This is, Tracy, are you here tonight? No? Okay, to be held on Saturday, August the 10th, from 4:00 to 10:00, on Marie Court, between Nelson and Mitten, with a rain date of Saturday, August 17th.
Madam President.
She's been here before. Yes, go right ahead, councilwoman.
If I remember correctly, I believe this is an annual event. The paperwork looks to be in order. I have no problem offering this for an approval on consent agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. We have an consent. As an approval, was there anyone else wishing to offer anything else from the council? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on to item two then, which is Rebecca here this evening for the block party? There you are, alright. To be held on Saturday, September 28th of this year, from 2:00 to 8:00, on Parkling Street, between Margarita and Clarita, with a rain date of Saturday, October the 5th. You want to tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do?
This will be our third annual block party for our street. We have great participation every single year. It's always the last weekend in June for National Good Neighbor Day, because we've got the best neighbors ever. So it's just a fun time, very kid-friendly, and this year we're hoping to make it a little bit bigger and have a bouncy house and some other kid-friendly activities.
That's great, great, well congratulations. Council, your direction or pleasure on a block party? Councilwoman Mc.
I'd like to offer the approving resolution for the consent, I mean, for the consent if there are no objections, and it is always wonderful to see Livonians here who are organizing block parties and getting neighbors together, and just congratulations and thanks for your work and initiative on putting this together. I'm sure your neighbors appreciate it and hope you have a great party. And so you know that means you don't have to come back to the, to the, to the next meeting.
Because we're going to do this every year, so you'll see me again.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you, councilwoman. Go right ahead, council vice president.
So, thank you, Madam President. Earlier tonight, you mentioned that you attended the Baldricks event.
Yes.
The star and the promoter of that event is Mr. Jwizwiki, who's here as well. So I guess just on behalf of council and the city, I just congratulate you and thank you for your efforts, and I'll make a note that I make a point to travel two blocks to harass this particular block party every year and make sure that everything's okay.
Since I need to stay on topic, thank you for always coming and harassing us on our street. Mr. Jolly lives just around the block from our neighborhood and has a lot of school friends on the street. And thank you as well, Madam President, for coming and joining us and shaving my co-organizers' head yesterday.
Yes.
As you can see, a number of us ended up with haircuts.
Yes.
We'll see if, maybe Jim will do it next year. I don't know what you guys think.
My hair is falling out. As we speak, it's on the desk.
Even more, even better.
Yeah, that's not a resolution that needs approval.
Alrighty, well, it sounds like, did we get an approving from Councilwoman McIntyre? So you're all set?
Fantastic.
Unless you want your hair shaved again?
I'm good.
Okay, great.
I've not done it yet, I have not braved the shave.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you for your involvement, we appreciate it so much. Okay, council then, we're going to move to item three, is a request to waive a sidewalk requirement. Is Larry Perry here? Could you approach a podium, sir, and give us your name and address for a single-family home to be constructed at 10166 Laurel?
My name is Larry Perry. My address is 39019 Stacy Drive in Livonia, 48154.
Okay, thank you. And what would you like to do on this, sir?
I would like to waive the sidewalk. Nobody has a sidewalk in the entire area. It would just look odd to have one house, a brand-new house with a sidewalk.
Okay, alrighty, council, there's new, oh no, that's the next one we have new information on. Your pleasure, your comments?
Madam President.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
I looked this over, he's exactly right, there's not another sidewalk anywhere in the vicinity. I'd offer an approving resolution for this, for consent, if there's no objection.
Council, any objection or further comment? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? You have an approving on consent, you don't need to come back, and it sounds like you don't need to have a sidewalk either.
Thank you very much.
You won twice on that one.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will they tell me something on paperwork, or I just, how will I know?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Zalinsik, our city engineer, will explain.
If you can have your person that's going to do the final grade certificate, we can give the council resolution for tonight's meeting in the future, so you have that put on the final grade certificate for approval. So work with the engineering department, we'll have the council resolution through the clerk's office to make sure you're abreast of the proper CR number, council resolution number. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Much success to you, sir. Okay, was there any comment from the audience? Nope, okay. Item four is a request to waive a sidewalk requirement again. Frank, are you here? Yes, here he comes. Mancina, is that how you pronounce it, sir?
That's how they pronounced it.
Many years ago?
Many years ago, in the old country.
That was it, I thought so. Okay, you want, let's see, Mancina Construction LLC for a single-family home to construct at 29106 Broadmoor. Go right ahead, sir.
Essentially, I'm asking the same thing as the previous candidate.
Oh, give us your address, sir, and your name.
I'm sorry, 14, Frank Mancina, 14700 Gary Lane.
Okay.
And I'm asking for the same type of waiver. There is no sidewalks at all on the entire street of Broadmoor.
Okay, appreciate that. Councilmember, expert on sidewalk, I'm teasing you. Any comments, council?
Madam President.
Yes, please, go ahead, councilman.
Same situation as the other.
Okay.
Yes, I know I've had some strong opinions on sidewalks, but each of those waivers that I've made more of an issue of have been where we've had patchwork situations on the street. This is another situation where on this street, there's nothing else, doesn't make sense. I'd offer approval for consent if there's no objection.
Certainly, good call. Thank you. Right now you have an approving on consent, meaning you don't need to come back and you don't need a sidewalk. It's a good night to be here on sidewalks.
Great.
Okay.
I'll watch my son play hockey now.
Okay, go have one, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and I didn't see anyone rushing up from the audience. Okay, item five, council, is a request for an authorization to approve a five-year contract with RouteMatch Software, the sole source provider for the Department of Resources for software and technical support with the Livonia Community Transit Program for a period December of 2018 through November of 2023 for budgeted funds. Director McCann.
Yes, I'd like to, I'm here tonight to ask approval for the five-year contract with RouteMatch. We're using him as sole source, because all our software, our routing software, the tablets on the bus, everything runs through them. The first year is a little less, as you can see, and that's because we prepaid for some equipment, computers, tablets, the license for the operators. Losing my voice.
Okay, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I would be happy to offer the approving resolution for this on consent, if there are no objections. I've been over at the transportation center many times and see how things work over there, and also would just like to extend a thank you to Mrs. McCann and Felicia Cross, who worked very hard to find a driver yesterday to provide a bus for transportation for 22 very enthusiastic senior citizens who enjoyed the LCC concert.
They were welcome, I heard it was a good trip.
They had a great time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have an approving on consent, was that it?
No objections.
Certainly, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Okay, I see no one running up from the audience on that, so we'll move to item six, request for authorization to purchase one trailer-mounted asphalt hotbox through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. This is brought to us from the Public Service Division for use by the Roads Department. Mr. Moore.
Good morning, council. Good morning, good evening, council. Doug Moore with the Public Service Division. We're looking to purchase a trailer-mounted asphalt hotbox. This unit will replace one that was purchased in 2007 that's in poor condition. The metal is rotting, causing holes, and repairs are exceeding the present, or the present value. The unit's used to keep asphalt patch material hot and more malleable, especially during the winter. Materials used to patch potholes, water main breaks, in roads and sidewalk vertical separations. The new unit comes with a battery charger, diesel-powered heater, tool rack, solvent tanks, and a safety directional board. It's being purchased through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, and it's being purchased from Alta Equipment in the amount of $26,688.20.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I'll offer the approving, anything that helps us fill potholes is a good thing, so I would ask that this be put on consent.
There's no objection. Thank you very much. We have an approving on consent, council, anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
It's just always a good opportunity to remind our residents that the potholes they deal with on Seven Mile and Merriman and the like are not ours, those are the counties. So yes, I agree with Councilman White, it's a good thing to do this, but let's just be clear about, a lot of the potholes we're having problems with aren't ours to deal with, so thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, okay. We do have an approving on consent, I see no one rushing up, Mr. Moore, so that's what you have, an approving on consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, sir, is a request for authorization to purchase one 2019 Ford F-550 to be upfitted into a signed maintenance vehicle through the State of Michigan Department of Vehicle Procurement and Macomb County Contract 21-18 to replace a vehicle used by signed maintenance from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore.
This truck will be assigned to the signed maintenance department. It's being purchased through the state bed with signature Ford out of Alaso as the servicing dealer. The upfitting will be done by VersaLift Midwest out of Shelby Township using the MyDeal contract. Outfitting will include an elevated platform, a jackhammer, storage containers, sign puller, lift gate, and flatbed for movement of signs, cones, barricades, et cetera. This truck will replace the current front-line unit. That unit will replace the old, old front-line unit, which will be gotten rid of through the auctioning process. The truck that's being, that's moving from front-line to secondary is a 2006 era, and the old truck is late 90s. The cost for the vehicle is $46,551. The upfitting is $41,869 for a total cost of $88,420.
Thank you. Council, your discussion, comments, pleasure?
Madam President?
Yes, vice president.
I'll offer an approving for consent. This is important stuff, and I trust that DPW does appropriate and necessary work with it, so it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President has offered an approving on consent, were there any others? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this matter? You have an approving on consent by Vice President Jolly, or Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Item eight is a request for authorization to purchase three 2019 Ford F-250s and one 2019 F-150 pickup trucks through the State of Michigan Department of Vehicle Procurement and the Macomb County Co-op Award Agreement. It's brought to us from the Public Service Division to replace vehicles used by various departments within the Department of Public Services from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore.
Lastly, these approved, or the four trucks were approved in the 2019-20 capital budget. The trucks are being purchased again through signature Ford out of Alaso on state contract pricing. The upfitting will also be done by VersaLift Midwest out of Shelby Township for the three F-250s. That will include running boards, toolkits, plows, light packages, and a combination of an air compressor or a lift gate. And these trucks will be assigned to parks, roads, and water section. The upfitting for the F-150 will be done by Truck and Trailer Specialties. That will include a plow, toolkit, light, and heavy-duty running board. The truck will be used to run parks, pick up items, and carry material for equipment maintenance. It will also be used for snow removal in the winter. Four trucks circa 2004, 2005 are being disposed of through the auction process, their repairs are exceeding their current value. Total purchase price for the four pickup trucks is $115,943. Total upfitting for the four trucks is $73,197. The grand total for everything is $189,140.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman McIntyre?
I would be happy to offer the approving resolution on consent. All of the paperwork is in order. We're using, as always, the appropriate procurement standards and processes, and also, again, and I think I've mentioned this before, having had an opportunity to go over to the Fleet Center and knowing Mr. Garrison, and knowing what an outstanding job he does at maintaining our fleet, caring for our fleet, getting the maximum use out of every vehicle we get, and the care that he takes with every new vehicle, very comfortable, of course, with this, and of course it's budgeted funds, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing no one, you have an approving on consent.
Thank you, council.
Certainly. Item nine is a word of contract from our Engineering Division for Whispering Willows Golf Course Parking Lot Improvements, Contract 19M from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalinsik.
Thank you, Madam President. As you're aware, Whispering Willows is in need of some parking lot repairs. Originally, when the clubhouse was reconstructed, the drop-off area and the portion surrounding the new building was completed over probably 10 years ago. However, the existing parking lot, we bandied it together with some joint seal, looking to pulverize the parking lot and additional new asphalt pavement. The parking lot was designed by the Engineering Division, put on a bid for four weeks, and bids were open on May 7th. We have six bidders ranging from $187,856 all the way up to $215,142.50. We had obviously some good bidders and some close prices. We're looking to award that bid to an angle paving in the amount of $177,856. In addition, we want to award $10,000 to OHM Advisors to help us in the testing of the asphalt and obviously the density test when we build that parking lot back, so we can do it to our specifications. If any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but the parking lot is looking to be constructed in the month of October and completed by early November on the off-peak season. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Council, any comment or direction on this?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go ahead.
It's always good to have the ability to invest in our capital here in the city, even when it is for the golf course, which some of us don't get to. If Mr. Meakin was here, I would give him a hard time, but some of us get to visit these things more than other people do. But I'm glad to be able to do it for the city, and I'm glad Mr. Zalinsik's leading the way. So I'll offer an approving resolution for consent.
Certainly, thank you very much. That's an approving on consent by the vice president. Is there any other comments? Anyone from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, then we'll go to item 10, which is a waiver petition from our Planning Commission, Petition 2019030203 submitted by Players Golf and Event Center South to utilize a Class C liquor license in connection with the operation of an indoor golf millionaire party charity gaming facility on property located on the south side of Plymouth Road in the northeast quarter of Section 32. Mr. Taramina.
Thank you. Again, this is a request for a Class C liquor license. It would be in connection with a new indoor recreational use and entertainment venue that would be at the LA Plaza, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road, just east of Levan, and some of you are familiar with the operation. A similar business was opened on Eight Mile at the Philmar Plaza called Players Golf and Event Center. This will be Players Golf and Event Center South, and it's very similar in nature. The primary use would be golf simulation bays, where there would also be a small banquet area. The owner would host millionaire parties, similar to what they do at the Eight Mile location. These are sanctioned and licensed by the Michigan Gaming Control Board. The Class C liquor license does have a couple of stipulations. One is that they cannot be located within 1,000 feet of any other similar licensed operation. There are two Class C licensed businesses within 1,000 feet. The first would be Kickers All-American Grill, and while that license is presently in escrow, there are plans to reactivate that license. The other is Timeout Bar and Grill, which is on the other side of Plymouth Road, about 370 feet from the location. So what the ordinance says is that if the proposed use is not used primarily as a dining facility, then the approval has to be granted by city council by separate resolution in which two-thirds of the council member concurs. So in order to allow this waiver use to occur at this location, you will have to waive that separation requirement by two-thirds majority vote. There would be no exterior modifications to the building. This is right in the corner unit. Parking at the plaza is more than adequate to accommodate the proposed use, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval of the waiver. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Petitioners, would you like to?
36115, Plymouth Road is the address.
And your name, sir?
Mark Scorelli, and it's my wife Lori Scorelli.
Anything you would like to add, or?
No, it's exactly the same as the other one. We're doing some different stuff out of the Eight Mile location for the off-season for us, which would be the summertime. We've been kind of lucky and had pretty bad April and May so far, so it's helped us out a little bit, but we, we tend, we know, we were prepared for the slowing down of the summer, but we had a great winter and fall, and really happy, so decided to venture in and open up another business.
Do you run it through this Cantor Real Estate Income and Opportunity Fund?
That is the, that's the landlord of the.
That's the landlord, okay.
Yeah, that's the landlord of the property.
Okay, great, great. How's the parking lot over there? Is it pretty paved, and is there enough room for all those cars?
Yeah.
I get my nails done right next door there.
Yeah, we're actually two doors down from the nail. There's a vacant spot, and then we're right where the old bike shop used to be.
Yeah, right.
And it's pretty, well, the parking lot's efficient. I haven't driven the whole parking lot to see how, what kind of condition it is, but it's pretty big.
Okay.
And there's employee parking in the back of the building, so.
Perfect, okay. Alright, just asking.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Okay, anyone? Comments? Yes.
Well, thank you, Madam President.
Sure.
I'll just say, you know, you're always hopeful that people are going to find a niche that works for them and a business that is successful, and clearly, the first location is a success, correct?
Yes.
You're confident that you're not creating a competitor for yourself, by yourself?
No, yeah, we've had, we had such a high demand for the two simulators. We had two simulators at Eight Mile, and we've had such a high demand, we actually have turned people away. So with being, the reason why I wanted to stay in Livonia was because on our website, when you go in to book a time, now we can offer, well, Eight Mile's full, but you know, we're very close proximity, we have another location now that offers two more simulators. So everybody asks that question about kind of competing against yourself, but we're going to do different things at the Plymouth location as far as we host the charitable, the charitable fundraisers on Wednesday through Saturday on Eight Mile. At the other location, it's going to be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, so that we kind of flip-flop, so.
Okay. You know, I don't think that there have been any problems reported with the other location at all, so I don't see a reason why we shouldn't approve this. I'll offer an approving.
Got to go on the regular?
Yeah. And I'll offer the second motion that's required as well, as explained by Mr. Taramina, also for the regular.
I just, I have a question. What time do you start your millionaire parties?
They start at 11 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
And then they go, depending on what charities, what charities come in, they go from 11 o'clock till like 6 o'clock, and then there's downtime. It's all monitored by the state. The state makes them do this. So they stop for an hour, and then another charity comes in. We've done a lot. We've done the Livonia Firefighters, done a couple, Livonia Stevenson out of the Eight Mile location. So it's actually been a pretty stress-free type environment. Everybody associates it with maybe kind of being a different crowd, but there, it's been really good.
Good, and you have to, those cannot run, and I know this is all state law jurisdiction, state jurisdiction, not city, those events have to end at midnight, is that correct?
No, they can go till 2:00 in the morning.
They can?
Yeah.
I thought there had been a change.
No, it depends on the license that the charity gets, but they can go from, they can go run all the way till 2:00 AM.
Okay, and how late, do you have?
We've had charities do 2:00 AM.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
It gives the charity a little bit more opportunity to have a good fundraiser, so.
Alright, great, thank you. I have no.
Thank you.
No concerns.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Anyone from the audience? You have an approving, and we'll see you on the 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. Item 11 is a green belt petition, Planning Commission, from our Planning Commission, Petition 201904GB01 submitted by Plymouth Woods Apartments LLC to substitute a green belt for protective wall, as outlined in Section 18.44, 45 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, is amended for property located on the south side of Plymouth Road in the southwest quarter of Section 30. Mr. Taramina.
Thank you. Plymouth Woods is an apartment complex that is located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Newburgh and Eccles, and complex was approved and developed in the late 1980s. There are residential properties, single-family residential properties on three sides of the development, including a parcel that is located near the center of the development's frontage on Plymouth Road. It's a single house, and the situation has existed since the project was developed. The zoning board of appeals granted a number of variances over the years to waive the masonry wall around the three sides of the property that the apartment complex is located, and the petitioner at this point is now seeking a permanent solution by requesting the green belt in lieu of the required wall, thereby avoiding the need to go back to the zoning board of appeals on a regular basis. We had no objections from the homeowner. The green belt standards are more than adequate in this case, the separation between the apartment buildings and the house, there's adequate distance, as well as birmingham and landscaping. A planning commission approved the green belt with a number of stipulations, including that if the effectiveness of the green belt is ever. the green belt i- is ever, um, substantiated or, or substandard, uh, you know, if, if something causes it to be diminished, that the petitioner would either have to erect a wall or, or make the, uh, the landscaping, uh, corrections. But as of today, uh, all of the, uh, the trees that surround the property are, are mature. Uh, they include, uh, a number of, um, uh, evergreen trees, uh, junipers, Austrian pines, as well as, uh, other deciduous trees. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. To the petitioner, hello?
Representative for Plymouth Woods.
Yeah.
Renee Sturgill, representing Plymouth Woods Apartments.
Thank you. Worked there a long time, Renee?
Twenty-three years.
I thought so. Wow. Okay. Go right ahead, Councilman Bershak.
Um, through the chair to Mark, is part of the reason that we haven't made this permanent before, just to have the accountability of them coming back to check on the condition of that, or is it simply been something we've just never moved to do to make it permanent?
It's something that they've never chose to do. The, uh, the, the, um, language was added to the ordinance, I believe, in the early 2000s at a time when I think they had just obtained their, either their approval from that resident who lives in that house, uh, or a variance or both. And, and so that carried for a number of years. Uh, I think they've done that a couple of times. So, um, there, there's really not been an, an issue that we're aware of. And why they haven't done this sooner, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, I know we've had some issues with other green belts in the city that haven't been well-maintained, but I also know there's some renewed efforts to, um, to follow up on these kind of things to make sure that, you know, when we put those types of conditions and resolutions
Correct.
That they're, uh, they're held to that. And, uh, I think we can, if we're going to do a renewed effort in that front, we need to trust our process and that, that will hold people to that. I do think in this case, looking at the map, if I was that homeowner, I would want a green belt instead of a wall. I mean, this isn't a situation where you have, you know, a, a row of houses separating from a commercial district. This is literally a, a house surrounded by something different. And, um, if I were that homeowner, I would think that it makes a lot of sense to have a green belt surrounding me versus, uh, three walls on three sides of my property. Um, so having said all that, I'd offer an approval on this for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember is offering approval on consent. Were there any others? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, you have an approving on consent, which means you don't have to come back unless you really want.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, we're all set on that, and, uh, this ends our, um, agenda. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the council on any manner that hadn't appeared in front of us on the yellow agenda? Seeing and hearing none, um, we are adjourned.